Brick?
Here.
Rockmeyer?
Here.
Campbell? D'Ariso?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Higgin? Oswald?
Here.
Toon?
Here.
Okay, um, I would, uh, now like to, um, have, entertain a motion for the, uh, minutes. If anyone has had an opportunity, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the, uh, minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion, here.
Okay, motion by Alderman Downey. Second by Alderman, uh, Bill Brook, that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Um, all those in favor say aye, those who say no, the ayes have it and the ayes are approved. Uh, with that, we'll also have the Budget Officer's Report, Treasury Report, Police Report, and, um, Aaron Comanton? Zero?
Let me read the...
Yeah.
For General Fund, ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and four cents in expenses. Infrastructure Fund, six hundred and thirty dollars. I don't add the tax to it.
Okay, Joe?
Okay. Uh, Motor Fuel Tax, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents. Street Fund, two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Water Fund, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay, um, Doug, you, you got a final report?
Yep, Lake Fund, uh, eight thousand, two hundred, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
That's your final report, I believe, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Um, okay. Can I entertain a motion to approve the Budget Officer's Report, Treas- Treasurers' Report, Lake Bills, Lake Abhock, Lake Watershed, Police Report?
So moved.
Okay. Motion has been made by Alderman D'Ariso, second by Alderman, um, Oswald, that, that we approve the bills. Uh, with that, the Clerk will call the...
Toon?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
D'Ariso?
Aye.
Rockmeyer?
Aye.
Bill Brook?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried by the... Six to zero. Sorry, six to zero. Okay, um, under correspondence, you will see that we received a letter from the Christmas Market. Uh, what they're asking for, I believe, is, um, the use of the alley, um, and in front of the refuge, um, to be able to park their, um, I believe, the bus, and then, uh, there's a shuttle bus and I, and the, uh, Harson Slay right through this weekend. We have done this in the past and, um, I was just, I will need a motion to go ahead and approve, if you'll not the Police Department. Yes, ma'am?
I make that motion.
Do you want to include the, uh, blue carpet corridor request?
Uh...
Or you want to do something?
It's up to you. You want to include that?
I think you must approve a vote and give a warning motion.
Okay. Motion has been made by Alderman Toon, second by Alderman D'Ariso, that we go ahead and include the, um, the blue carpet corridor in this motion, and that would be, uh, for the cargo Christmas Market to use the Harson Buddy or the Harson Slay and also the, um, the, um, bus and then, um, also the blue carpet corridor. Okay, Clerk will call the Alderman's.
D'Ariso?
Aye.
Rockmeyer?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Toon?
Aye.
Oswald? Bill Brook?
Yes.
Okay, um, next we're going to go to public comment. I have a couple things I'm going to mention. Uh, the Train Depot Open House Gate to officially open and celebrate, uh, the opening will be Monday, December the eleventh, at 1:00 P.M. And also, um, the, um, I, um, the Illinois Vicentennial Flag Raising Ceremony to celebrate the, uh, anniversary on the State of Illinois. Uh, they have sent us in a flag and that Illinois Vicentennial Flag Raising Ceremony will be on Monday, December the fourth. I do not have a time yet, but I will let, uh, everyone know. And, um, the Governor's Office sent in a flag and that will be full and all year of celebrating the State of Illinois Vicentennial. And that's their two-hundredth birthday celebration. Okay, with that, um, we'll go to public comment and, um, Matt?
Yeah.
You want to, you want to come forward, please? I see you want to talk about the lot.
Yeah, um, I had an outstanding request, um, I was waiting to see if I could get an answer to, but, um, I, I didn't see this on the agenda, but, um, uh, my understanding is, uh, Fosterburg Water District pulled out of the, uh, regional water entity and, um, rescinded their fifty-thousand-dollar seed money and also, um, removed their appointment to that board. So, the question I have is, um, you know, they, they were told they don't have statutory authority to participate in that entity, so, um, I was wondering, uh, what specific statutory authority gives Carlingville the right to participate in that authority?
I think at this point, we'll have to have the...
Wouldn't know without researching it.
Okay.
This is the first I've heard of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Um, next on the agenda will be, um, let's see, what do we have? We'll have, yeah? Alderman?
Um, several, uh, meetings ago, somebody made a comment here, and I may have misunderstood, but they were talking about the new depot, which is beautiful, by the way, and they were talking about that President Lincoln rode on the Illinois Central Railroad. That, that, does any, does anybody remember that?
No.
Well, it's completely incorrect, anyway. Uh, I have a map here from, from eighteen thirty-eight to eighteen fifty-eight, which was the year that he got off the train to Carlingville
Yes.
to debate Senator Douglas.
Yes.
And the map is from that time, and it clearly shows there's no Illinois Central that goes anywhere near here. So, just in, in the event anybody tries to say that President Lincoln rode on the Illinois Central, that wasn't true. It was called the Chicago and Alton. And, uh, even earlier, it was called Chicago, Alton, and St. Louis.
Yes.
Um, but I don't think, I think they dropped the St. Louis part later, but, uh, no, there, there, there's clear reference to that.
I think when, I think when David Gillen was putting the, doing all the mural, there was a lot of research, and he's a very, um, avid Lincoln scholar.
Okay.
So, he had done a lot of research. I don't recall that being said, but I know that...
And I can't remember when it was said, but I heard the word Illinois Central and Carlingville, and the Illinois Central actually merged with the Gulf Mobile in Ohio.
Yeah.
I mean, seventies, but, but that time, I don't know if I'm tracking, anyway. So, I just wanted to clear that up, because I don't want anybody to put a plaque up where it says, "Oh, yeah, President Lincoln got off the Illinois Central." He didn't. That's all my, that's my comment.
We only had President Ford get off here, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else have any comments?
Come on the agenda, right?
Anybody else? Okay, um, Jerry? Little?
Okay. I'm really speaking here for Paul Lewis. He owns the motel. Kyle owns the Gible Home Services there, Allen the building, and we're expressly concerned to try to get that alley opened up that runs along the west side of, of his property to get to the, what, Center Street? Yeah, get up to Center Street. In the morning, a lot of times during the day, there's enough traffic back up on Route Four that Kyle can't really get in out of there to get on the highway, and then, uh, there's a lot of days, there's no room for more, and then more parking there, so it really would be advantageous to get that alley opened up so that they could, uh, go to town. There's a temporary road on Paul's property right now. Now, the last year, there's been lots and lots of dollars spent out there cleaning up that Kuchar Building and tearing down that motel. And right now, I think they need a little help from the cities to do something about vacating that alley so that alley could be made passable, and, uh, they would pick up the cost of doing that.
Who would pick up the cost? You would pick up the cost?
Right.
Okay.
But it would be advantageous to Kyle, too, because he's the one that used the full length of it the most.
Okay, is there, Kyle, do you have anything, anything to say on that?
Well, other, I guess, kind of just echoing what he said, it's, we've, you know, the city's kind of, we've, we brought in those appliances and it's, it's kind of took off better than I thought it would, so we've gotten busier there. And then in the processes last year, kind of unexpectedly, we brought in another company from up in burden. So, we're doing a lot of work north, so we, I've just got more employees and more trucks, kind of quicker than we thought. So, when I saw that that was available, then, um, or not available, but I saw that was an alley there, I mean, it would be beneficial to, to have it if, if we could get up and out of it.
Are there any neighbors that live around there?
Yes. I'm Bernie Geedle.
Is it officially closed at one point? Did anybody know?
No.
I think it's unimproved at this point, you know, it's, it's got trees generally to have. Like, when you want to close it, you probably have to go through the same steps as real thing. You got to have consensus of your landowner, but you have...
Yeah.
Mr. Geedle?
Good evening. Um, I'm Bernie Geedle. I live at, uh, three oh six Oakland with my wife, V L. V L's actually the, her name is on the property with the owner. We, this affects our property on the, on the, uh, be the east line of our property. I guess it's east, kind of northeast. And I just was wondering why, why does even want to vac, why do you want to vacate that? I don't understand. I mean, what's, what is the purpose of vacating that property? And what, and what benefit or what detriment would it be to us to have that done? And I'm concerned because only, I don't care what goes on over there. Um, they've taken the motel down and, but we have a buffer of bushes behind our house, and in the summertime, it's nice privacy. If, uh, we would like that protected. That's the only, that's our wish, is to have our buffer protected from what goes on behind us. That's it, basically. I don't care what goes on back there, but, um, if it's vacated, this, this, we were given this by, uh, what's his name?
Steve.
Uh, Steve Park. And it shows our property, but, can some, you want to look at this? Somebody?
We have pictures of the trees and all that stuff, if somebody wants to look at that stuff.
I have, I have a...
I just have a question. There, here's a word on that.
I have a question on this.
I don't think the alley is right here.
No.
I think the alley is an alley that's never been worked.
Yes, ma'am.
No, they weren't...
At the very mouth of this alley, there's a building sitting there.
That's where I was, right?
So, I mean, where, where everybody would drive through, that actually...
They built a gravel road that goes to this point.
I'm reading it up.
Let's take a moment.
But according to this, our property line goes in the middle of this road. So, they can't be... Amen?
What about the property, no?
That's our property. Yeah. It goes right in the middle of that, of this road.
That's something that would have to be, um...
And if it is vacated, isn't there a ten-foot? Doesn't each party share in that? Maybe that's what makes it...
If anyone would just kind of adapt and take their seats for a second, please? All right. Everyone take their seats. Please?
Hey, Jerry. She asked if her might sit down. She asked if her...
Everyone take their seats.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Geedle? Okay. Steve, have you looked into all of this?
Um, right now, the alley is just unimproved. It has not been vacated. Apparently, it's been unimproved for quite some year. And it's a twenty-foot wide dedicated alley that runs between the two properties.
And the city owns it?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine, no record of it ever being vacated.
Okay, it's never been vacated. All right. Um, I think what we'll do at this point, since we do have a dispute basically or some question about this, um, I think I'd like to send this back to Public Lands. Uh, they meet in a couple weeks, and, uh, in that time, we'll have, we'll have a little bit of time to maybe look at the property that's in question.
I'll stay.
Yes, yes, sir.
I guess the question is if you, you want to take land and let trees grow up to its protection for somebody's property they don't own, or you want to take a strip of property that's generating revenue for the city of Springfield, uh, for Springfield, Carlingville, and make it usable? I guess that's a, something that we'll find.
All right, we appreciate your comments.
One other thing, ma'am?
Yes?
The use of that alley would, uh, also cut down on the congestion right there at that corner, both with the employees trying to come to work and go to their jobs, as well as the deliveries coming to that business. You know, I mean, there's, going into that business, there is no turn lane. We've got fifty-three-foot trucks trying to get in there. We're blocking, we're blocking traffic. There's absolutely no reason for us to block traffic if we've got another accessible road that we can use to get to our loading dock.
Okay, I appreciate your comments. Yes, Mr. Geedle?
Yes, Mayor. Um, if we have a fifty-three-foot semi trucks going in and out of there, we have grandchildren that play in the yard, and I don't think that's the same, that's the same situation. We don't need that back there.
Okay. Let's send this back to, um, Public Works and, um, or, I'm sorry, Public Lands, and we'll meet again, uh, what, December? Second? December eleven?
December eleventh.
Eleven.
Eleven, eleven, okay.
Second block here.
Okay. Six o'clock, December the eleventh, we'll meet again. At that time, the, um, the members of the committee on Public Lands will have had an opportunity to take a look at, uh, the issue in question, and we'll go from there.
Who's on that committee, please? Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda?
Ma'am?
Yes. Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Of them, you pretty leave?
No, no, no. Oh, just during public comment.
Okay, got it.
Um, going back to what Matt had said about the, um, state statute allowing us the authority to, uh, form a water, a nonprofit water commission?
Yes.
Can we look into that? It was suggested, I went to the Fosterburg meeting, and, um, they said...
I think it was also mentioned at the, um, Jerseyville meeting also, wasn't it?
About state statutes on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The attorney was looking into that.
With, um... Their attorney that they were going to hire?
Well, he was the mid, um, I think midway, um, attorney that had put that one together, and I thought he was looking at that. Uh, am I correct? He, did he not go into great lengths about the statute on that?
He's also the one that said the way Fosterburg's formed is kind of the reason on them. Doesn't apply to Jerseyville, Jersey County Road Water or Carlingville.
Is it extremely time-consuming to do that?
Probably not.
Would you do that, so that we know that we are covered before we do anything else? I think it is...
Their attorneys have also talked to Rick about it.
Talked to?
They have been...
Okay.
There is, uh, yes, they have been in contact with, uh, I believe with Rick. And him not being here receiving, I can't, I, I don't know that what point he's...
I think so, no.
But they have been in contact with Rick.
You can see on the left side of the picture.
Any other questions in public comment? All right, um, nothing else on business? I've already discussed the flag. Uh, M F T?
This is a work order from Hennington. Uh, this is a, uh, exact duplicate of last year, and the work order is actually, uh, to not exceed, not to exceed seven thousand, and I believe somewhere last year, they were only in, somewhere in the four, four thousand-dollar bracket. And this is, this is, uh, third year in a row for having them administer them, Motor Fuel. They do all the bids, they send all the stuff out, they take care of all the paperwork for the, uh, D M T. Just, so, same thing as the last two years.
That's an informational, um, we don't need a board.
Yeah, the one of the board, I'll go ahead.
Everybody go ahead.
Yep. Make a motion for a critical work order for the M F T of desperation funds.
Okay. Motion has been made, uh, by Alderman Downey, second by Alderman D'Ariso, that we go ahead and do the work order on the, uh, yes.
Can, can we make that stipulation not to exceed that number that's on the sheet?
I'd exceed seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
Thirteen?
Seven, not to exceed seven.
Not to exceed seven? Okay. Uh, motion has been made, that's, uh...
Question?
Yeah.
Is this not something that, would it encourage, um, engineers could do for us?
We've, um, I've rechecked this. Greg, you want to answer, Dan, or, um...
I, I will. This is something we've asked before about not taking work away from the engineers we have. It's a work order that needs to be done and accomplished, so the paperwork going to be submitted by December first. I don't think we have time to get somebody doing all, and all these documents that's in this, that you have in front of you in your packet. So, at least for this year, I'd like to see, uh, Hennington continue, because they already got it all there.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Motion has been made by Alderman Downey, second by D'Ariso. We'll go ahead and approve the work order by Hennington not to exceed seven thousand dollars concerning the M F T. Any other questions? If not, Clerk will call the board.
Bill Brook?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Rockmeyer?
Yes.
D'Ariso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yep.
Oswald?
Aye.
Toon?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried, six to zero. Okay, next will be, um, Mitch. Let's tell before to talk to us about, you know, this is the guy your father, and he's going to explain the insurance for the train station, and if you'll introduce your guest with you today?
This is, uh, Mr. Steve Venus with Bliss McKnight. Uh, he will talk about his portion of the insurance, and, uh, I recommend any questions you have or concerns, ask him while he's here.
Welcome, Steve. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just enough of that, huh? Um, there's, you asked me last meeting to bring two proposals forward. Um, I did. Um, I labeled them options A and B. On the second page there, it kind of lays out what each option is. Uh, option A is liability and auto with Bliss McKnight. Uh, property is with Chubb. Um, the cyber liability is with Access Insurance Company. The umbrella is to be determined, hope to not make it in today. And op, tail coverage is with One Beacon. Uh, we'll touch on that. Uh, option B, liability auto is still with Bliss McKnight. Property is with Cincinnati. Access Mine would be with Lloyd's of London. Uh, cyber liability is with Access. Umbrella is still be, to be determined, and tail coverage is with One Beacon. And, uh, both, both options A and B will have Bliss McKnight on the liability and auto. So, I will let's hand this over to Steve, and, you know, if you have questions, please raise your hand to get my attention or his attention as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. How many hours right after this, again? I can do it in three minutes or three hours, whichever you prefer. Usually it's somewhere in between that. I know that Mitch already talked to the Finance Committee, so I'm not going to go through, you know, in infinite detail or anything like that. I just kind of want to touch on some of the things that we bring to the table from the liability and auto standpoint. You know, we're a specialty wholesaler that, that works with lots of different types of government liabilities in Illinois and Indiana, and then they've been doing it for over fifty years. Our, our approach is to work with local agents, because they're the ones who have local knowledge, know what's going on in the community, have a vested interest in the community, and it's all, it's also good for you guys to have local agents. It's good for everybody, for them to be, uh, running the show through us. When you sign the paperwork, you will become members of what we call Governmental Interinsurance Exchange, or G I E for short, which is the name of our insurance company. It's a reciprocal, it's owned by its members and managed by a, a company called Governmental Insurance Managers. And I have some paperwork for that. It's rated A, excellent, by A M S, which is the company that rates insurance companies on an objective basis, and it's fully licensed and regulated by the Illinois Department of Insurance. We have a philosophy that goes back a long way since our inception of G I E in nineteen seventy-eight to, to vigorously defend our, our insurance and their public officials against, um, non meritorious suits. We've taken over twenty cases to the United States Supreme Court on behalf of our insurance, which is a record we're quite proud of, uh, and been successful most of the time. Twenty out of twenty-three, I think, is the latest stats on that. And this is all in the cover letter. We also offer a variety of risk management services. Mitch can work with the different departments to implement those throughout this process. Okay, I am going to, if I flip to page two of the proposal, because some of the stuff in the cover letter duplicates what's in here, so I'm just going to speed it up a little bit. One of the things that's unique about us is on the liability side, we have four different types of, four different main lines of coverage, and each one of those main lines has a high limit of liability. In this case, five million dollars per occurrence on the multi-class liability, the wrongful employment liability, and the employee benefit E N O liability. So, five million dollars per occurrence, and also what they, what they call a ten-million-dollar annual aggregate, which means we could have two five-million-dollar occurrences within a given year. And, and those are aligned, those are, those rate a few on page two of nine of the proposal. The multi-class liability, five million per occurrence, ten million. Item two, employment practices. Item three, employee benefits, E N O. Uh, the prior acts for the Arizona emissions part is a lower limit. Uh, that's just our corporate policy. Whenever we go back to twelve-one, we go back five years on that to twelve-one of two thousand and twelve for that claim's made coverage, because ours is written on a, what they call an occurrence basis. Um, but we'll go back up to five years. Usually the statute of limitations is one year or two years for the vast, vast majority of cases. I think other than those insuring, those involving minors might be an exception. There's not a lot of other exceptions. So, we're going back five years on that. And so, just picture four different colors of liability limits at each, depending on the nature of your claim. I haven't even gotten to the auto liability yet, but that's a five-million-dollar limit on the liability as well, with an unlimited aggregate. So, there's lots of, lots of insurance money out there that I hope you'll never need. You could literally pay over thirty-five million dollars in claims, depending on the nature of those claims. And I just hope that you'll never need those coverage, all of those coverages in any one given year. We include your major exposures like law enforcement, it's a big exposure, civil rights is a big exposure. Those are kind of related. And we, we get a lot of claims, some of our hot buttons on claims are law enforcement, um, employment practices, things like, you can see it in the paper, sexual harassment, you know, not necessarily of non, of the public nature that you're talking about, of employees and things like that. So, those are some of the hot buttons. Some of our risk management is designed towards reducing those exposures, keeping your rates more stable, keeping our claims down, which all makes one big happy family. And we've got some online employment practices training that we recommend your departments go through. Again, we can get into that as we get closer. Pages three to four just kind of give you more detail on some of the coverages that are included in your program now. Page five is the auto liability and the auto physical damage. Again, we have the five-million-dollar limit for occurrence. We have a one-thousand-dollar deductible on the vehicles. And then page six is just the premium summary for the parts of, that we're providing in this package. You know, we're not providing the property or the workers' comp or the cyber, that type of stuff. We're, we're doing the liability and the auto parts. And you can see the premium there on page six of nine. Page seven of nine lists the routine, like I'll routine but important, binding paperwork. And I've got paperwork here that can be signed, um, by whoever's going to sign it when that time comes. Uh, let's see. What question? Uh, let's see. What questions do you have for me? I don't know, I went through it really quickly, because I, you guys, Mitch still has to go through some of the property stuff, and I didn't want to. You know, I don't want you here all night, but I wanted to make sure I addressed your questions.
Any questions?
We appreciate the business and look forward to working with you guys. I guess I'll be coming to Carlinville more often. Or our risk manager will. I probably won't be as much.
You know, in finance, I think we went through it pretty well. Mitch did a great job at finance meeting the other night, so.
On the umbrella part, they just keep saying to be determined. Is that going to be, is that a huge amount, or?
I'm estimating no more than like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand. It was supposed to be here this morning. They had to go up to the CEO of the issuing company, and he was out today. So, I should have an answer in the morning.
So there'd be excess of our five?
That'd be, and that would be excess of their five million. So it'd be, it'd be a five over five. So, if you had a claim going over five million, would cover that. And also would go over where they only have a million dollar limit for their, your prior, do you have for your E and O as well? It's only a million, or is your E and O?
E and O is the only one with the prior access limit.
Okay. It would go over all that, and it would go over the auto, but he has no aggregate, so.
But the umbrella's per occurrence, right?
Per occurrence.
So he's going over five million?
Yes.
So you'd five x that too?
Yes, five x that. And I, I'll just go over the rest of this.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said per occurrence?
Yes.
The umbrella will cover per occurrence? So if we have two five million dollar occurrences in one year, and say the second one is six million dollars, what happens if we get a third occurrence?
You're going to be reaching your.
I've never seen that, but just, I've never seen the second one either.
So the umbrella doesn't cover that?
The umbrella will kick in after the fives. So currently you have a one million, three million general liability. So, let's say I fell in the middle of the street, and that claim went over a million dollars, then your ten million dollar umbrella would come down. So you would have eleven. Currently, with, with what he's offering, you would have five, if I fell in the streets. So, that's where that other five could come, come into play. Now, it's precaution. It's just an option we want to offer, for you. Any other questions on, for Steve or myself, on this part? Okay, uh, you'll go to the. We went over that in finance, the ending of his, what they offer and stuff. The cyber quote, I went over that in finance as well. It's a three million dollar aggregate limit, and they have separate tiers for different things. If you want me to go over more in detail, I will. Oh, I'm sorry. Cyber is, it's, you'll see this where it's included in both A and B. It's the page right after.
Probably about fifteen pages.
Probably about fifteen pages in. It'll have access across the top. If you got hacked, or?
Yes.
Yes, that one. And it has, you know, it has for security events, if your website, you copied someone's content on your website, things like that. Um, if you did credit card transactions, and you got credit card hacked, and you had fines to pay, we cover that. If your employees' records are stolen, it'll pay to notify all your employees, things of that nature. Is there any questions on that?
How many, how many, as far as governmental bodies go with that cybersecurity?
More and more.
More and more. It's kind of, we can, in my bit, in my side of it, we call it the, of crap, we should have had that covered. I mean, a lot of people do look back and say, we should have had that. And a lot of insurance agents on my end get sued by customers because we don't offer it. And at Diamond Brothers, our goal is to offer it to everyone, every commercial customer we have. You know, if it's not this year, it's next year, I mean.
And it's really pretty important. It's not my product, but from what I've seen in here, it's very affordable for what you're giving.
We, we've offered it to other municipalities as well, and I've, most of them take it. So even the smaller, smaller ones do, so. The next one, this little page that I typed up, this is from One Beacon. This would have to be endorsed on your policy. This would be the tail. It would only be, and the correction on this is after talking to him, is it only have to be on the public official's area of omissions, as he would go back to the retro date of us, I believe it's July first, nineteen eighty-five, is what he said?
Yeah, June fifteenth.
Or June fifteenth, I'm sorry. And this would cover any claim that could happen back going that far, within the statute of limitations. So that would be, and that premium would actually probably be a little less. But that would give you two policy years of coverage, and we would just endorse it on the end of the current policy. It's very popular when you go from claims made to occurrence based coverage. And then we'll get into option A. We got into these a little bit at the finance committee. Option A is with Chubb. Just give you a few highlights. Chubb can do things a little differently on their own forms. Like I said, they cover mine subsidence up to the value of the building, where the cutoff is seven hundred and fifty thousand with any other carrier. They also can cover building ordinance and law, which is if you have a lot of historical buildings that aren't up to code, and something where total loss were to happen, they would, they cover you up to the policy limits to get them up to code. That's two things that they cover up to the policy limits. Mine subsidence as well. So, you know, you have an excess policy for just City Hall now. You would also have full mine value at the train station here. Your next highest value building would be Lake Carlin with the water plant, so that's like two point eight million. So, you, the coverage you don't have now, you'd be gaining with that. And premium for them is forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. And that does include terrorism and incident fire. And this also does include the little bit of equipment you have left, so like the police speed trap. And you have some stuff for SEMA and some miscellaneous tools that, in talking with Carlo, we still need to cover, so. And that's not, it's like two hundred dollars, so. There's a schedule list there. Shows the blanket. You have about twenty-two point eight million dollars in building coverage. That's blanketed, meaning they don't show each location, they just do a blanket. If you have a total loss, that's the maximum they would pay. If you lost every building in the city. Machinery breakdown is included. At the bottom of page eight of this one, right here, they have a, here, inland marine is looking. On that next page, page nine of the Chubb, they have, they are willing to go policy aggregate limit for earthquake, ten million, with a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible per premise. So, if there was an earthquake, your deductible would be twenty-five thousand per location affected. So, that's not uncommon with the schedule amount we have. Flood would be five million with them, and they also have a twenty-five thousand dollar per occurrence deductible. And that's Chubb. Is there any questions? And that, all buildings are on replacement cost there, meaning that's the amount it would take to actually replace the building. So, not what it's valued at on the market. Any questions on Chubb? And at the end there, I have a premium summary for the first option. And Bliss McKnight came in at sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Chubb came in at forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. So, the estimated without the optional coverages would be one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. With the optional cyber tail coverage, you're looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, some change there. Any questions on that?
Mitch, can we go back to?
Yes.
Under, it's called page one of two, exclusion of specified premises and operations endorsement.
Uh, for Bliss McKnight?
Yeah, maybe that's more geared to Steve. Pretty early on in the. Have you found it?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, number one, it's about premises not covered and described as, obviously it has a railroad there.
Sure.
Is that an exclusion?
Yeah, we, we're not covering the, the railroad, the Amtrak. We're providing the premises for the, the station that you guys own.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that distinction.
Yeah, we talked about that in the writing, early in the process.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we don't want to cover the rails. That's not, you know, we don't want to.
I don't blame you.
Yeah.
There are problems with airports here for some reason.
Any other questions? Yes?
That does cover the platforms though, correct?
No, the private station.
And option B here, this, yours is in color, but it's in the middle, towards the end of the pack, middle end there. Option B is with the property of Cincinnati. A little note, Cincinnati will offer the same as Chubb, ten million aggregate limit on the quake, five million on the flood. They, they're, they cap their deductible though at a hundred thousand per loss. So you'd have to have a hundred thousand dollar plus loss in order to get the insurance to kick in. Where, as there's a twenty-five thousand dollar per premise or per occurrence with Chubb. This is just going to show you a lot of the pricing and rating per location. A lot of the locations say one main street. A lot of your addresses are legal addresses, or like we have Oakbrook, Taggart, we don't have a physical address there, we just know where it's at. So if this were the option you want to go with, we would just have to get the legal addresses from our files. We just wanted to save some time. This does include their plus endorsement, which adds some coverages that's in there. I'll go. It does have equipment breakdown as well, flood, earthquake, pollutant removal. Go towards the end.
But I do, what's our premium now? I mean, what's our cost now?
Your cost last year was like a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, but with, you did have a lot of changes over the year. That's not with the work count. That's what you got to, you got, when you added the management company, you took a lot of, I mean, you went from, I think, fifty-some vehicles to twenty-one vehicles. You got, you increased the umbrella, so that increased the premium. What else? We got rid of the fire department, got rid of that property, but we did add the train station, so that kind of evened that. But we got to rid of the fire department vehicles, things along that line. So premium has gone down from last year. And on Cincinnati, they are willing to offer a three-year policy. Means you have a policy, it's a three-year term, you owe premium every year, but your, your rates are locked in for three years. It's popular. I know some of you aren't sure of that, so. You're made for that. I'll just go to the property page, or the, sorry, the premium page, and it's forty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That is on a three-year term. And then there's this page, it's got WA Chicken Dance on it. That's your excess mine. You currently have a policy with them for your excess mine on City Hall. It covers, it covers the amount, once you hit the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit, it picks up after that. So it's just kind of having another policy. That, that premium seventy-three hundred dollars, it's the same as last year. I also did quote it's optional. I also put it on the train station as well, because it is over a mine. And that premium would add an additional, back here, eight thousand, one hundred and one dollars. So, the final numbers with all the optional coverages for the Cincinnati proposal is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven. It's the last page in your booklet.
There's a question. Other than the deductible, the thing that's a hint about, making about the same is the optional coverage for the premium, one's about eight thousand higher than the other, seven thousand about watch. What, one's seventeen thousand, one's nine thousand, on the optional coverage for the premium?
I, in the second one?
One of them's nine thousand, the first one and the other one's seventeen.
It's seventeen because of the excess mine. Cincinnati can only cover up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars maximum per location, for, for a building. Where Chubb can write it up to full value on their forms. So they, they have it as a covered peril, like wind or hail. So if it, they're, they're, they don't have a limit. They, they cap it at whatever the building is at. So in order to match that with Cincinnati, I had to go get two, another policy. And that's, so that is optional on the train station. We already have it on City Hall. It was something that Jeff told me was decided years ago. So I just wanted to make sure I included that as an option as well.
So it's like that seventy-three hundred ripped into the option?
Yes, yes, okay. Any other questions or concerns?
And you have to reach out to the mines subsidence?
The mines subsidence is covered to the, to the value, yes, with Chubb. It's an included peril, like I said, so if it's like, if hail hit your house, that's a covered peril, mines subsidence would be included. That's something they can do on their forms. They could also include ordinance and law on their form, as well as, I mean, he, most of Bliss McKnight's customers now do go with Chubb on the property. They have a very close working relationship, so. You've had.
You know, we've had a lot of good success with Chubb over the years on their, we don't represent Cincinnati, so I can't say much about them, although I know it's a good company, because I used to be insured by them myself, till my teenage daughters started driving. Anyway, another story. Perhaps this guy can relate. But yeah. He's just presented two different options on the property, one from Chubb, which has the mine subsidence limit up to the building value at each location. And one from Cincinnati, where he had to go out and buy excess mine subsidence on specific locations.
Yes. Some locations, some locations you only have seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, that'd be like some of your water, the water treatment plant, for example, would only have seven hundred and fifty thousand if the mine did collapse and there was subsidence because of it. You'd only have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with Cincinnati. As compared to Chubb, you'd be covered up to the full two point eight million dollars, which is what it comes out to with the value, the replacement cost of it.
Any other questions? Any questions?
What you said, what, just one, how many years is Chubb been in business? I've never heard of Chubb before. Has it been in business a long time, or?
Yeah, a very long time. Yeah, they're actually, Chubb is actually part of ACE now, which is even bigger. But yeah, Chubb has been around forever. They're rated A++ superior. So it's like the highest rating you can have financially. I'm not sure what their size category rating is, but it's, it's really high too. They're a very big company, the Chubb group is, yeah.
And they specialize in property for municipalities, government, counties, hospitals, colleges, anything that has large, large property closures and values, so.
Mitch, and Steve, where's Chubb, where's their headquarters?
I deal with, I deal with Don, and he is in St. Louis.
Yeah, we work with their St. Louis office.
St. Louis?
They have offices.
They also have offices in Indianapolis and Chicago. Not positive where their headquarters is, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ours is in Bloomington.
I know yours is in, I think there are several other entities here in town that have Chubb. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and from what I understand, they've been having a good look with that?
Yes. If you'd like a reference, I can give you a reference. Not insured with me, but I just know a little bit of Chubb.
Okay, um, option A, option B, any questions there?
Are we waiting for a motion? Is that what we need, a motion?
Well, I think we probably need to go ahead and do a motion tonight, and then we'll have to fill in the blank on the umbrella.
Is, is that something you want?
If that's something that everybody wants, we'll probably have to fill the blank in on it.
I should have an answer by tomorrow.
We've got to have this done by December first.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have to have a motion tonight. Yeah, we have to have a motion tonight. Option A or option B?
I would like to go with option, I would like to make the motion that we go with option A.
Yeah, okay. There's a motion on the floor to go with option A. Alderman Oswald's made a motion to go with option A, seconded by Alderman D'Ariso to go with option A. Any other discussion before we go?
Question. Option A, without the, without the umbrella or with the umbrella?
With.
With?
With.
Okay.
Any other questions before we take a vote?
Is there to be a limit on the umbrella, I mean, if they come back with a high quote, I mean, we don't want to be locked in, do we, I mean, if he comes back and says it's fifty thousand with the umbrella, I mean, do we want a certain premium amount?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think he, he's gonna come back with that, I think you said like, no?
He said twenty-three.
Twenty-five is where I think it's gonna top.
Yeah, I was just saying, I mean, if he comes back and says it's fifty, I mean, I mean, where do you pass it?
If he comes back and says it's fifty, we'll have to reconsider.
I, I don't imagine, and I think we're on the same page as the other company, and I don't think it's gonna be over twenty-five, I think it's gonna be under that, but that's where I'm gonna set the benchmark.
Okay.
Do you wanna make Sarah's motion contingent on it not going above a certain figure?
Yeah, not going above.
Which they'll know about by tomorrow, from what you tell them.
Yeah, they're, they're Eastern time, so.
Yeah, they probably know right now, then.
I wish.
They're not going over twenty-five, is that what you want?
Or even thirty, I mean, just a number that we.
Just a flexible number, you want, yeah.
Okay, so let's go, a motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, that we go with option A, not to exceed, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the umbrella?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, and that's been.
I think you should go higher, Ben, it's gonna be a problem, if you say twenty-five and it comes in at twenty-five-five.
Okay, let's do thirty-five.
I'm happy with thirty-five.
Going once, going twice, we have an option here, okay, all right, motion, okay, you've rescinded your motion, then we're gonna make a new motion?
Well, I'm gonna make the motion that we do option A, determine on that the umbrella is less than thirty-five thousand.
Okay, got it. Motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, seconded by Alderman Dresel, that we go with option A with the umbrella figure not to exceed thirty-five thousand. Everybody okay with that? All right, so we'll call the roll.
Oswald? Billbrook?
Hi.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Dresel?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Tim?
All right, all right, motion is carried, six to zero, and we will be going with option A. Thank you, Steve, very much for, for coming, being here this evening, and bet you'll be getting in touch with Laura, with world.
You wanna do the signatures tonight or tomorrow?
We can do it either.
We can wait until.
If you don't mind waiting?
Yeah, we'll wait.
You got a couple more items?
That's fine.
We can wait, I'd rather have it tonight, I'd like to take it tomorrow.
Okay, we'll be fine, we'll get those signatures, then we'll go ahead and, thank you. Next on the agenda will be Alderman Downey with the letters.
We have a request for a lease transfer from Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell to Sylvia Dixon, the property, the lien is one six nine zero three Bridges Lane, one six nine zero three Bridges Lane. The inspection for the sewer has come back, no problems, and the taxes have been paid on the property, I make a motion to approve the transfer.
And that's from the Mitchell property to Sylvia Dixon?
Yep.
Okay, motion is made by Alderman Young, seconded by Alderman Billbrook, that we go ahead and transfer the property, the Mitchell property to Sylvia Dixon, we'll call the roll.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Dresel?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald?
Motion is carried, six to zero. Okay, Steve, you would like to go ahead and give your pseudo advisory report? Anybody ready, please?
Okay, Calhoun, planning its own commission to help the public hearing on November seven, to consider a request by Daniel Hauser for a variance to lock construction of carport at Fort Presswood Drive, and the commission approved the request, five to zero.
Okay, any questions on the zoning?
One?
Yes, Beth?
Your setback is going to be eight feet on the front of the property line?
That's correct.
Okay, ten needs to side, right? And the neighbors are big with it?
Yes, he's obtained signatures from most of his neighbors, the zoning committee approved his application, now nothing, everything is in order.
All right, yeah, motion has been made by Alderman Toon, seconded by Alderman Billbrook, that we approve the report of the zoning advisory meeting, and, and the report, we'll call the roll.
Dresel?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Tim?
All right.
Oswald?
Okay, motion is carried, six to zero, and it will be Alderman Downey?
Like to make a motion to adjourn, even though it's not on the agenda.
Although we can't do it. Oh, no, we're not going there.
Motion is carried, all the good things are signed, we're closed.